Hello, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the December fourteenth Planning Commission meeting. And, and I, oh, I suppose I should call the meeting in order. Let's do that. And then, item number two is to approve the agenda. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move down to approve the minutes from September twenty first, twenty twenty-three. May I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion.
There's a motion. And there's a second. Um, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Oh, we're gonna start the public hearing like right away. Um, let's see where we are here. Uh, okay, uh, we're on item number four, public hearing for Carver Place preliminary plat. Um, Erin Smith, Community Development Director, you give the presentation first and then we open the public hearing?
Yes, I'll give you a full rundown, too.
All right, cool.
Ready?
Go.
Ready. Thank you. Chair, members of the commission, tonight we're reviewing a preliminary plat for Carver Place. So first, I just want to run through the game plan tonight, talk about what we're going to do here together. Maybe. There we go. Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. So first, I'm gonna give, uh, I'm gonna flip the order, actually. We're gonna do introductions because there's a large, uh, large group of people from the development team, so we'll do introductions. I'll give a staff presentation. At that point, I'm going to ask the developer to join our conversation, so give some information that I may have missed or other pertinent details about the project. Feel free to dialogue with them as part of the conversation. At that point, we'll open it up for full Planning Commission questions, so if you have specific questions about the project, that's a great time. We'll do the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing, have Planning, Planning Commission deliberation, and then tonight we are looking for an action on preliminary plat for Carver Place. I want to start saying this, I'm going to say it often, rezoning is not required for this project, so most development projects that you see, we run preliminary plat and rezoning together. This is just preliminary plat, so it's just one action tonight. Doesn't change the way I'm going to present the information, but just so you know, it's just one action. So Erin Schmidt, do you mind going first for introductions?
Yep, Erin Schmidt, I'm the Assistant City Engineer.
I'm, I'm Jorgan Brant with Cos Wilson Architects.
Steve Dunbar with Ivy Properties, owner rep for the CDA.
Allison Strike Deputy Director with the CDA.
Chris Rotell, Maintenance Manager with the CDA.
Welcome.
All righty, so let's dive into number one. So tonight, we're talking about Carver Place. The screen right now shows where the project is outlined. So this project is directly south of Carver Crossing, near Carver Station, adjacent to Oak Tree, which is the, the Linnar Development, that's south, and Copper Hills, which is the west development that was from, is a Madamie project. So we have residential on most sides of Carver Crossing, Oak Tree, Copper Hills, and then a little bit of Carver Station. So all of this is important as we start walking through the history. It's a big zoomed out view of some of the work the CDA has been doing in the city of Carver on this site since 2010. So thirteen years here of history that we're gonna start walking through together. So it starts again, 2010. The CDA purchase is thirty-six acres at the corner of Jonathan Carver Parkway and Ironwood Drive. At that time, the first iteration of the project was CDA offices, City Hall, and sixty units of multifamily. So these are the thirty-six acres that they purchased in 2010. So thinking about it now, it's projects that we know as Carver Station, Copper Hills, Carver Crossing, and then this open multifamily site that we're considering tonight for preliminary plat, so Carver Place and the future potential site for Carver Oaks, which is a project we'll also talk about throughout this presentation. Twenty twelve, the CDA submitted to the city for a single and multifamily in the park-and-ride facility. Again, those projects later become Carver Station, Copper Hills, and Carver Crossing. Twenty thirteen, the CDA applied for a PRD, so Planned Residential Development, which is a zoning process that we run through a lot in Carver. Most of our residential projects do have that PRD. Most of our projects are zoned R-two PRD, which this project is as well. I'm gonna walk through some of the specifics of that zoning district in the next slide, but just wanting to let you know that this site has been rezoned since 2013, so no rezoning is required tonight. At that point, the Carver Station site was also sold to the city of Carver after we received the CMAC or the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant from the Met Council. Every time I nail that, I feel really proud of myself, because it's a strange one. And the single-family sites sell to Madamie. So this is the area that was considered for the PRD, the R-two PRD, so all of these units are hooked together in the density requirements for all of the projects. So density is spread across the site. So it's Copper Hills, Carver Crossing, Carver Place, and Carver Oaks, all lead together for the density requirement for that R-two PRD. So let's talk some details. The PRD was approved November 2013. At that time, we were operating under our previous comprehensive plans, so I call it the 2008 Comprehensive Plan. That plan called for medium-density residential on that site. At that point, it was four to eight units per acre, so medium density, that was the requirement. You needed to either be at minimum four units per acre, maximum eight units per acre. Taking out infrastructure and the Carver Station site, twenty-seven acres remain for residential development. So again, say it with me, Copper Hills, Carver Crossing, Carver Place, Carver Oaks. Those four projects fall within that twenty-seven acre area. So if you take twenty-seven times four to get the bottom range of that density, it's a hundred and nine units. If you take twenty-seven acres times eight, you get two eighteen, which is the max of that four to eight units per acre. You take Copper Hills, the first phase of the development out, you take off forty-seven units, that's what Phase One Copper Hills was, changing the range of the site with that minimum and maximum for two sixty-two at the lowest that we would need to have to hit that density, maximum one seventy-one. Carver Crossing was the next site introduced, which was sixty-eight units, so you take that out of the density equation, one hundred and three units remain. So the project that we're considering tonight is Carver Place, and the CDA is actively working on Carver Oaks, which is slated to be a forty-three unit senior facility, which Allison and I might ask you to give a little update on when you come up. So right now, we're thinking about Carver Place. Carver Oaks, we're anticipating at a future date, hopefully soon to get forty-three additional units for seniors on that site, which would bring us to that total of two eighteen. So in total, it's Copper Hills plus Carver Crossing, plus Carver Place, plus Carver Oaks. You get to that eight units per acre that falls within our medium-density residential from the 2008 comp plan. All good? Okay, that's a lot of numbers.
No, not tonight.
All right, yeah. So looking that, looking at that on the screen, it's those forty-seven Copper Hills lots, sixty-eight Carver Crossing, one oh three remain on this lot that we're talking about tonight. Some other projects that you'll see in there, so the PI, which is Public or Institutional just north, that's Carver Station. The P, that's directly west of the one oh three, that's Olson Park, which met the Parkland Dedication Requirement for the PRD. So how does that fall with our comp plan? We've done an update since then. So we continue to have the property guided for medium density, so that stayed consistent from the 2008 plan to the 2018 update, so it still falls medium density. This project still falls within our range, checks out for comp plan, so we hit that medium density. So back into our timeline, let's see, where was I? I think I was in twenty fourteen. So the CDA sells two-point-one acres to Ron Clark, which becomes Carver Crossing in 2015. That's when the approvals went through. Twenty sixteen is when Carver Crossing was constructed by Ron Clark. That project is owned and operated by Stephen Scott Management, so a different construction and owner on this property will be done by the CDA. Twenty nineteen, the CDA submitted a concept plan for Carver Place. The CDA and the city then held an open house at Carver Crossing, so we were in the community space at Carver Crossing. We invited residents within that building, and then we did a really large mailing to residents along JCP, asking them to come in, share feedback, take a look at that project. So that was in twenty nineteen. The Planning Commission reviewed the concept plan. City Council did as well. The project paused due to funding restrictions, so we've had this project, came in for concept plan in twenty nineteen. We've known that the CDA is continuing to work on it, we've continued conversations with them, we've processed a few other requests through the City Council. In 2021, the City Council, as part of the strategic plan, requested that the city hold a housing workshop, so we partnered with the CDA. We presented information on what it meant for our product to be affordable, so we all had shared language around what affordable meant. It's not the same from person to person, it largely depends on your lifestyle, your situation. We learned also a lot about the numbers that we needed to hit for affordable housing, how we could partner together. Twenty twenty-one, the Housing Action Plan was also adopted. In 2022, we knew that the CDA continued to work on this project, so in January, the Planning Commission reviewed what we called the CDA Project Preview, so we wanted to make sure that you were still thinking about it, wanted you to know that we were continuing to work on it, so we did the project preview. February, the City Council did the same, and then in 2023, in June, the CDA and city held an open house on the property that Carver Place will be located. So it was a really hot day, it was very sunny, so we all were standing out there with large boards. We invited people from Carver Crossing, Oak Tree, Copper Hills to come, share feedback, learn more about the project. Uh, overall, I think it was a really great open house. We met a lot of people in Carver Crossing. Uh, one resounding thing is that someone asked if it could just be a pool instead, which I had to say, no, nice, but no. But it was so hot that night that it was like, yes, let's make it a pool right now. And then in 2023, obviously, we're here tonight, the CDA made an application for preliminary plat. So tonight, Planning Commission review, December fourteenth, 2023. We're anticipating City Council review of the same action, January fourteenth, 2024. Ooh, that's the first time I've said that out loud, I think. So if you're interested in keep, is it the fourteenth or is it the fifteenth? Darn it, it's the fifteenth. So it's the third Monday. Yeah, that's what I think throws it off. Erin, confirm that for me. Give me the date.
Fifteenth is a Monday.
Okay, sixteenth.
Sixteen.
January sixteenth, sixteenth, sixteenth. Uh, so if you want to stay engaged with the project, that will be the next time that it's reviewed by the City Council, is January sixteenth. Okay, so remember the concept plan that you reviewed, July eighteenth, 2019. It's changed a little bit. I wanted to get it back in front of you so you could remember what we were talking about. Uh, for a while, we thought that the building was going to be one, so it was going to be general occupancy on the south side. Uh, the senior section on the west side of the site was shared spaces. Uh, due to some funding restrictions, we're just moving forward with Carver Place, which is the sixty general occupancy units, uh, with an anticipated arrival of Carver Oaks, the senior product. So with that, there are some significant changes to the site that I want to point out specifically, just so that we can track that this was the version that came before you in July 2019, and there are significant changes to what we're reviewing tonight for preliminary plat. So the two biggest changes, Carver Oaks, uh, not, and, uh, not included on this application. And then on the concept plan that you first reviewed, there was some parking and an underground access to the garage that was on the southeast corner. Uh, I want to say that it all worked out to be the way it was supposed to be. We got some feedback from Oak Tree residents, people saying, I'm going to have headlights in my house all of the time with people turning into that garage. So due to the changes of, uh, just Carver Place moving forward and Carver Oaks changing a little bit, the building shifted. So no, no longer will access to the parking garage impact any copper, any Oak Tree residents, and if vehicles are moving that way, that building will shield headlights going into Oak Tree. So unfortunate that the building can't come in as one. The shared community spaces were really inspiring. I thought it would be a really interesting product, but I think that this works out a little bit better for those Oak Tree neighbors that had some concerns about headlights. So things to note about this, cars will route towards residential, will not route towards residential homes with the updated layout. There's a second access off Hartwell Drive, which has been contemplated since 2012. And then there's some updates to the shared landscape space between Carver Crossing and Carver Place. So it's anticipated right now, there are some community gardens there right now that will be impacted from construction of this project. They're going to be relocated, additional gardens will be added, so the space looks just a little bit different than it did in the original, and then the gardens have been added since. So we will preserve those as part of the project, they'll just move a little bit.
Quick question, Erin.
Yeah.
It originally, was it always two bedrooms, or did we increase to three bedrooms also?
Two bedrooms.
If you go back a slide.
Uh huh.
It had one, two-bedroom and studio?
Oh, yeah, so now it's, it's true one-bedroom, true, true one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom. So I have some layouts of the, uh, building. Allison, if I'm speaking out of turn, correct me, but I think it just changed.
The studios are on senior project.
Oh, they're on, oh, good one. So Carver Oaks.
So Carver Place was always one, two, and three.
Okay, got it. Good catch, Krista, you are so good at details. All righty, so there's the site plan without any callouts, so the general layout of the site, uh, the Carver Place building, and then the future senior building for Carver Oaks.
Yeah.
Do we need the microphone?
Yeah, for sure. So the button is here.
Here.
Thank you.
So you have to use it.
Which has one.
Usually.
Okay, so, uh, as part of this, as part of the preliminary plat, there is an introduction now of a lot line. So before, it was just one building going on one parcel. Since we're moving forward with the two projects, we need to create a lot line that allows for the development of the two projects to happen separately. So as part of the plat, we create a lot line that allows for the two projects to develop. On the screen now is the preliminary plat, the document that the Planning Commission reviews, uh, for general compliance with our city code and that PRD that was adopted in 2013. So right now, we're talking about Lot One, Block One, which will be Carver Place, and then we'll hold Outlot A for a future Carver Oaks project. So again, preliminary plat, really technical document, uh, not something that you usually want to show a friend to say, look at this cool thing we're working on together, but this records things like property lines, easements, access points, et cetera. So let's start talking about Carver Place and the building specifically. So this will be the view from Carver Crossing, so this is the north face of the building, so you'll see three-story buildings similar to Carver Crossing. Uh, materials for the site, I wanted to hear that, think that we maybe have some samples here tonight, is that correct? Okay.
I just happened to bring them because I wanted to look at the colors.
Oh, good. Well, I'm gonna ask if we share them publicly, if that's okay. Um, primarily, the project is LP siding and hardy board, so a nice, uh, construction material that withstands all types of weather and is long-lasting. So sample of what the building will look like, you can see in this, uh, there's generous landscaping, those community gardens start to come into focus as you see some of these different angles of the project. So let's get down to some of the details. Carver Place is sixty units in total. There are fifteen one-bedroom, thirty-two bedroom, and fifteen three-bedroom. In total, there are ninety-five parking stalls, seventy underground, twenty-five surface level. There's indoor and outdoor bike storage and ADA accessibility throughout the entire building. So let's think about that PRD that was approved in 2013. So these are the, uh, bulk regulations that were, were required. You'll see that, uh, Carver Place meets all of them without, with ease, so there aren't any that are closer, that require vari, uh, variation, so there's not an amendment to the PRD required. Something I want to call out is that our city code calls for sixty parking stalls for this building, and they're offering ninety-five, so a generous amount above what is required with those seventy, especially being underground and twenty-five surface level. Again, just another view of the building so we can start thinking about it in relation to the rest of the community. All righty, and start thinking about layouts. So, uh, the bottom is obviously the parking garage. Something to note is that the trash enclosure is within the garage, so we don't need to think about things, uh, like a garbage truck being in your backyard at four AM coming to get trash from a facility. Also makes it, uh, we have some pretty specific requirements for trash enclosures, so this makes it pretty easy for us. And then the top is the first level of the building. You'll see that there's a community room, fitness, a few, a conference room, a few offices, lobby and mail, and then trash and elevator. So, uh, when Allison comes up, I'm gonna ask that she shares some information about how the building is staffed, CDA's involvement in the building, but in general, a couple office spaces there for staff of the CDA. And then the third and fourth floor, so you can see a mix of the one, two, three-bedroom. Uh, if you see on, um, there's like the unit three-two type A, so those are the accessible units, so throughout, there's accessibility throughout the entire building. And then some examples of what the floor plans look like for the unit, so they are, uh, Krista, like you mentioned, asking this question about the studio, they are true one-bedroom units. So each unit has laundry, and then, uh, the one-bedroom has one bathroom, where the two-bedroom units start to have two. So again, all units with laundry, this is an example of the two-bedroom unit and three. So they range in size, the one-bedroom is about seven, seven hundred square feet up to twelve hundred square feet for the three-bedroom. A view of the building, so top is north, so if you're standing at Carver Crossing looking south, that's the view. The second is if you're standing at Oak Tree looking north, so two different views of the building. A landscape plan, uh, so in general, the project meets the requirements of the city code. In total, there's two-hundred-and-forty-eight plantings that are proposed throughout the site. So I want to call, call out, um, I've had some inner turmoil about the landscape plan, so they submitted this plan. Uh, there are some trees that are proposed on the south side of the project that fall within a drainage and utility easement, not something that we typically allow. We like to have access through all drainage and utility easements, so I said, take those trees out, they're in a drainage and utility easement, they shouldn't be there. Uh, and then over this past weekend, I was thinking about it, and I think those trees are important, so I asked the development team quick this week if we could go back to the original plan. So introducing the trees back on the south side, I think it's more important to have the Oak Tree folks have some delineation of their property without landscaping, instead of trick, sticking to the drainage and utility, no tree requirement. So the plan in the packet was the landscape plan without the trees. I asked the developer to go back to the version with the trees or the version on the screen, that's also reflected in the site plan. So if you see a difference between that, go for the one with more trees. So thinking about that line of trees between Carver Place and Oak Tree, it's a mix of overstory and coniferous trees, so it's Scotch pine, river birch, black hill spruce, linden adjacent to Oak Tree, so you'll see a mix of overstory and pine trees that will create that landscape buffer. Something else that we like to think about is lighting, so this shows the, all the, all of the lights that will be on the project and where, uh, the light will spill. It's measured in foot candle, which is a really technical measure of light, but the yellow line there is the property line, so you can see that no light will spill from the site into the Oak Tree development. So again, the preliminary plat that we're looking at tonight is just this technical document, but it's important to understand the whole story, the building, the history, how we got here. Um, I was joking before that Cindy and Jim could probably give the history better than I could, because you were in these seats in 2015 when a lot of these meetings happened, but hopefully the abridged version was okay, too. So a couple more project details that might be important to you. Park dedication is required for this project. Since we don't have a park planned in this area, we're taking fee in lieu of land, so park dedication right now is four thousand seventy dollars per unit, so in total, it's about two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars that will come into the city for park dedication. A traffic study was completed in 2012, so that information has been affirmed by Bolton and Mank, so we were able to take the traffic study that was approved in 2012 and say, does this still hold up? What does this look like? And it checked out that all of the assumptions that were made then hold true. The nice thing about this project coming when it did, uh, some of these projects went in before Ironwood and JCP were fully built out, so we were making a lot of assumptions, and we were saying, this will work when these streets are fully built out. We're at that point now. The streets are fully built out. That traffic study still holds true, so no concerns about increased traffic to our system. Utilities were constructed at that time for full buildout, so we've always been thinking about that two eighteen number for the site, so sewer pipes were sized for that, water pipes were sized for that, likely even larger than that, because that's who we are as people and engineers. You go as big as you can. So utilities were constructed for full, for full buildout, so capacity is available, and the building is fully sprinkled, so the fire department has reviewed, it's a fully sprinkled building, so if something were to happen, a sprinkler system would get on pretty quickly for the whole site. Thinking about how this, uh, project gets into our larger trail system, this trail already exists with Carver Crossing, but through the parking lot and some sidewalks, Carver Place also connects into our larger system. You can see on the north-south, it connects right into that JCP trail, so people living here will have full access to our trail system to get to know our city and our community and all the places you can go on our wonderful trail system. This project has been reviewed by city, several city departments, planning, engineering, legal, fire, administration, and then this project additionally required a couple other jurisdictions, so Carver County Public Works. Since the project is adjacent to a county road, that triggers the county to also review the project, and the Carver County Water Management Organization, or the CCWMO, they will provide a permit for water on the site, so we're working with those two groups to make sure that everything meets their standards as well. So tonight, a public hearing is required since we're going through a preliminary plat process. Notice was mailed to property owners within three-hundred-and-fifty feet of the entire property, which is set by state statute. It was roughly sixty-five homes and all homes within Carver Crossing, so sixty-five single-family homes, sixty-eight apartment units. Notice was run in the Chaska Herald on December fourth, 2023, and notice of the public hearing was posted at Carver City Hall. So where we're at now, uh, we have been through the staff presentation. Allison, others, if you don't mind coming up here, if you want to give us any information that I missed, we can start asking some questions of the CDA and start our conversation together. You can use that microphone if you turn it on. You got it.
Hello, commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. I'm Allison Strike Deputy Director. Um, well, maybe one little fun update that I think Erin was alluding to earlier, just in regards to Carver Oaks. Um, Minnesota Housing recommended that project for funding approval at their board meeting today, so we will not be too far behind with what we will call Phase Two of the development or the senior, um, project. So that's exciting news.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, does anybody have any specific questions?
Did you want to provide any additional education about affordable housing, because we talk about the sixty percent AMI, um, and what kind of housing is available?
Sure.
In Carver and then Carver County?
Um, well, specific to Carver Place, so all of the units will, um, every, all households will be at or below sixty percent area median income. Um, and then we further income target, uh, specific households, some households at fifty percent of AMI. There will be seven units of Section Eight-Eleven, um, in that building, and so Section Eight-Eleven targets households where the head co-adjourners spouse are between eighteen and sixty-one, um, disabled, and then, um, some other criteria about their, um, previous housing situation. Um, and those units are subsidized, so that targets like extremely low-income households. Um, and then we'll have seven units that are for high-party homeless households, so that will also target thirty percent of AMI households, and those households come off of the coordinated entry list. Um, and I'm happy to explain about coordinated entry if you want to know more, but that's getting really into the weeds.
You do want to?
No, I don't. It's, it's homeless households, so all high-party homeless households, um, it's for all homeless families. Um, so, and then the service provider for those seven high-party homeless households will be the Scott Carver Dakota CAP Agency. Um, and the Section Eight-Eleven units, we partner with, uh, DHS, and then Mental Health Resources is the service provider for those units. Um, and then we obviously accept housing choice vouchers for all of the CDA-owned properties, so right now, the CDA is at about seven-hundred-and-twenty-three, I think, between seven, seven-hundred and eight-hundred units, um, already scattered throughout the county. They're all affordable or subsidized, um, and some of you may be familiar with our newest building in Waconia, Trails Edge South, that just opened last December. It's just been open for about a year. So very similar to Carver Place, we basically using the same floor plans, a lot of the same materials. Um, it's just that Carver Place is a little more complex in the funding sources. Um, it has ten different funding sources, so it's a little bit more challenging, um, not quite as straightforward as Trails Edge, but certainly we're super excited about it. Um, and then you wanted just to know more specifically about the county in general?
How does it help bring the county up to reaching affordable housing, like the county and the city, because the city has that in their plan also?
I don't know off the top of my head, I, what the city of Carver, what your target numbers are through the Met Council?
I do.
Okay, I knew she would.
Well, Cindy, yeah, so she prompted me with some of this information. So in our comp plan, uh, it calls for four-hundred-and-thirty-five units at or below sixty percent AMI, which is project hits. We're currently at one-hundred-and-eight total in the city of Carver, so with Carver Place, we'll get to one-sixty-eight of our goal of four-thirty-five.
Um, and it obviously will give you a good bump in your housing performance score, too, with the Met Council.
It sure will. Yes, you are correct.
Um, so, I mean, overall, I, I think, just in general, there's just, I mean, we see it all the time with the waiting list that we have and the calls that we get, there just truly is a need for affordable and subsidized housing. Um, what I will say is, so the county, or I'm sorry, the CDA, um, we are partnering with Carver County Public Health right now to split the cost to do an updated housing and, um, housing needs analysis for the entire county. So Maxville did a countywide housing study in 2014 with a breakdown by, for each city, and then in 2017, we partnered with another organization, and they did a, um, affordable housing update by city. And the, we really did that to help the cities with your 2040 comp plans, and so now we're partnering with Public Health to do an updated housing needs analysis, and we're hoping to have a draft of that by February, March. Um, and then my intention will be to come back in front of the city councils once the, that housing study is done, just to kind of present an update of what the county needs really look like, and then, um, speak individually to each city, because again, there will be a breakdown by city in that plan, or in that, um, report.
Carver Crossing had pretty strict rules for, for residents. Carver Crossing had pretty strict rules for residents. Are it going to be the same case here for?
Are you referring to the screening criteria?
Well, screening, having guests.
Jim, can you pull your microphone closer to you? Thank you.
Having guests, stay, police records, I believe.
So yes, we will have screening criteria, just like we do at all of our other properties. Minnesota Housing gets a little bit of a say in some of that because of the funding. So in addition to our screening criteria, this project will have a tenant selection plan, just like Carver Crossing has, that will outline anything from like screening and then the income piece. Because you have to also income qualify for the project. And then we have policies in our resident handbook about, you know, how often you, like, who is considered a guest and how often can you have a guest stay over, and outlining all of our rules. It's, it's, it will be the same handbook we have in place for all of our properties right now, minus, you know, any nuances specific, that might be specific to the funding, how we got funded in some of MHFA's requirements.
And, and this building will be managed like, like Carver Crossing, twenty-four-seven?
So this building will be managed by the CDA, we manage all of our properties. So during probably the first twelve months or lease up, we will have somebody probably on-site between five and eight hours a day, five days a week. And then once the building is leased up, we will more than likely have somebody on-site between five and eight hours, three days a week.
What, do you have any idea what the history is with Carver Crossing? I mean, those of us who were at the first meeting. We, you know, we heard how housing prices were going to drop, which obviously hasn't happened. But crime statistics and so on, has there been any, I mean, as far as I know, as a resident of Carver, there hasn't been any big crime issues. Has there been, been anything as significant?
You know, to my knowledge, there has not, and what I would say is probably not, not more so than any other of your single-family home neighborhoods in the city of Carver.
I'll share the same message from the city, anecdotally, there has not been an increase. I did a quick check of some records for twenty thirteen. Carver Crossing does not stick out as an anomaly for any reason, based on number of calls. The fact is, it's sixty-eight housing units close together, so if you look at any other neighborhood that has sixty-eight houses in it, it's just that it's closer together. But no significant increase due to that specific project.
You know, and maybe just to reiterate one of the things I remember talking about at the city council meeting for Carver Crossings. Whereas a single-family homeowner, you cannot screen out or make a single-family homeowner sell their home. We have mechanisms in place to screen out and or enforce our lease and make people leave if there are issues.
I'll also add that you don't get to choose who your neighbor is.
Yes.
When you live in a single-family home.
So the concerns that were presented in twenty fifteen, that the end of the world was.
Have not, they have not come to fruition, no, they have not. I think Carver Crossings is a beaming example of, quite frankly, the exact, exact opposite of what the neighbors were concerned about.
Just as a comment, my wife and I walked the site this, this afternoon, and I think you need more bike, bike racks.
So Carver Crossings, for Carver Crossings, yeah, they are, that's owned by Ron Clark, but. To relay the message, we are meeting, I think your requirement is one for every, so sixty units, we have to have thirty bike racks. We will have thirty bike racks, most of ours will be in the garage, but we do meet that requirement.
There were a lot on the ground.
Yeah.
And maybe that's just lazy kids, which wouldn't be surprising.
Anyone else have questions for Allison?
So at this point, Cindy, do you want to open the public hearing? We can keep asking questions, just so we don't have a while of just sitting here waiting.
Sure, let's do that. Okay, we'll now open the public hearing. All of those wishing to address the planning commission should come forward, state their name and, and address for the record. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less. After all comments are received, the public hearing will be closed, no further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. Comments, anyone?
Anybody live in Carver?
I do.
We can keep the public hearing open too, as we start going through some questions as well.
Okay. Questions? I mean, I'm pretty familiar with this project.
It's been a long time coming.
Yeah, it has, I'm glad to see it.
Well, I have a lot line question.
Yeah.
It's just going there because the two buildings aren't getting built at the same time.
Correct.
Yeah, just because of how it's funded, are, how, are the, the person who's funding, like, we can't have a shared lot.
And our city code calls for one principal structure per lot, so we couldn't leave it as one and then propose two buildings on it.
So if they would have been connected still, it would be one lot.
Correct. We, we have been through several versions of it too, it was like, could we connect the building, could we do a zero lot line, construct half now and half later? But that made my building official, like, shutter. So I think the end result is going to work out best for all parties involved.
I think our general contractor probably agreed on that one too.
It was fun, from people who don't really have to think about those things.
We're like, we think it's a great idea, why can't it work? Really long walkway.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we just wait?
I, I would say, since there are no members of the public in the room right now.
And, and the meeting's been going for thirty-six minutes.
Correct, there's no one on the Zoom either, so I would say, if you'd like to move forward, closing the public hearing, you're more than welcome to do so. I'll also just note, I didn't receive any correspondence, email, mail, call, et cetera, so I haven't heard from any of the residents that were noticed about the project.
Okay. In this case, because we have nobody from the public here, nobody on the Zoom, we, and we've been discussing the project for over thirty-five minutes. I'm going to ask for the following, a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Mary makes a motion to close, second?
I'll second.
Jim seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed. Motion carries, public hearing is now closed. Do we, does anybody want to discuss this any further before we go to the motion for approval of the preliminary plat? Okay, could I get a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Carver Place?
I will make a motion to recommend the approval of the preliminary plat for Carver Place.
Thank you, Krista, is there a second? Thank you, Mary. There's a motion, a second, to recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Carver Place. Is there any further discussion? None, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed. The motion is carried. Very good, thank you so very much for coming, good to see you again, Allison. Okay, shall we move down to some new business? Got any new business?
Not tonight.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What are we doing with Reed's open spot?
So typical interviews for open vacancies come in March, so that will be part of the planning commission process in March.
So we're down to one alternate.
Correct. Mary is our one alternate, yes.
Any other new business, Erin? Okay, how about some old business? Old business, okay, communications?
We have an application for Timber Creek Fifth that will come before the planning commission this winter, so that'll be the final phase of Lennar's project.
Oh, that seemed to go faster.
It really, really did, it went really fast. We'll start thinking about Carver Oaks, so we'll give you an update as we start thinking about that project as well. And then, I know this will thrill you all, but since this project is through this process, we can start our work on zoning code updates again. But besides that, happy holidays, all.
Thank you.
How many housing permits were there in twenty twenty-three?
We're at like the upper eighties. Oh, I want to give one more, can I keep going?
Sure, go ahead.
We're working with the school district on a transportation facility or a bus garage, so that project will start coming before you as well. A lot of processes need to happen, so they're looking to annex a portion of Joe Wickenhauser's property near Fleet Farm and Lakeview. So city council will take some actions before this group starts to see it, but you might start to see some of that information pop up on city council agendas.
Okay, I have one thing that I should have asked earlier. When is this project slated to begin after city council approval? If it's approved, sorry, I, I was, that went in and out of my head, you know?
That's okay, right now, we are anticipating closing on April first and breaking ground on May first.
Great, okay, thank you so much.
So the planning commission will see a final plat request for this project as well, so we have, should the project can, to can, continue to move forward, we'll see final plat as well.
Okay.
How long does it take to build a building that size?
Twelve months was the answer, if you need a microphone, this room is hard.
Okay, any other communications? Well, I'd just like to tell everybody, I hope you have a wonderful holiday, and I will see you next year. May I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn, a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed. Motion carries. We're adjourned.